We will now call the meeting of the Waco City Council on October 5th, 2021, to order at 3:00 PM. Would you please join me for a moment of silence? Thank you. We provide an opportunity for the public to address the City Council on any agenda item or during the hearing of visitors portion of the agenda. On items other than public hearings, speakers will be allotted one three-minute presentation, regardless of the number of agenda items the speaker wishes to address. If you are here to speak and have not filled out a registration card, please see the City Secretary staff at the registration table outside the auditorium to provide registration information so that staff can contact you if necessary. If you have handouts, please let us know at the beginning of your presentation and staff will distribute to council. If you're unable to approach the podium due to physical limitations, a microphone is available to be brought to you. I have two cards here, so when called to the podium, please state your name and address for the record. Each speaker must limit comments to three minutes. If you're speaking on behalf of a group of ten or more individuals, please have those persons stand at the beginning of the comments, and you will be given three minutes to address the council. Please note that if you stand in support of a person getting ten minutes to speak, you're forfeiting your right to speak on that item. For any person addressing the council through the use of a translator, the speaking time will be doubled to accommodate for translation services. While public discourse is very important to the council, we have to maintain order in meetings so that all persons may be heard and council business may be conducted. So if directed by me, the Sergeant of Arms shall remove from council any person who, while addressing the City Council or while attending the City Council meeting, makes personal and pertinent or slanderous remarks, becomes boisterous, or who makes unauthorized remarks from the audience, claps hands, stomps feet, whistles, yells, and makes similar The first person I have to speak today is Mr. Robert Aguilar. You start the podium. Good afternoon, Mr. Aguilar.
My name is Robert Aguilar. I live at 2416 Connor in South Waco, where I've lived all my life. I'm putting my application in along with my friend Armando, who'll be speaking next. And to let you know, there's two qualified Hispanics. Both of us have a lot of experience in civil duties and, I mean, civil issues and board members, board members of different organizations. I'd like to point something out, though. In 1970, the Alliance for Mexican-Americans and during the Chicano Movement filed lawsuit for single-member districts. Back in the 40s, it was, uh, it was, uh, single-member districts. But when the black people started moving to East Waco from the farms, it became at-large. So that was nothing but racism, prejudice, and to keep us from having a voice. So that's why we filed a lawsuit and we won. And I'm saying it's imperative that you have Hispanic, but Hispanic that understands our community, not one from Baylor. I'm a Baylor graduate, so I love Baylor. But I see their streets being paved over when the streets don't need paving. I've seen things, Baylor get more things from the city than we do. Our streets need paving, they're not paved. So you need somebody that understands our community and not get a token Mexican that y'all think you're going to do the job. Now, as far as it goes, I support the city of Waco. I've been here all my life. I supported the Model Cities program. I was an employee there. I support the HUD programs. I support the police department, the water department, the sewer department. I have contacts with all these people. Plus, I know the community at large. I can speak with a banker as well as someone that's homeless and not judge that person as homeless. So I just wanted to let you know how imperative it is that we get someone from the community, not just a Hispanic, not just a Mexican, but someone that has been involved in the community, and that's very important. Otherwise, they're going to be in a learning curve, and that learning curve is going to fall like this. So us two are both qualified just lately now. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, sir. And next, we have Mr. Armando Avizu. And please state your name and address for the record.
My name's Armando Avizu. I live at 1705 Park Avenue. I'm going to talk about a little bit about the history of South Waco, what it means to me, because not very many people, not even people on the board knows exactly what went down in early 70s. Okay? So I'm going to give you a little of history. Like I said, my name is Armando Avizu. I have lived in South Waco all my life. I remember when I was a young boy, the Hispanic population of 10% was mostly in this area of the city. My father, P. Diavizu, was very influential for getting community issues to be heard through discrimination lawsuits against Waco ISD and the city of Waco, in which Hispanics and African-Americans and most of all, the community as a whole, was victorious. The court ruled there was discrimination in the Waco system in the early 70s. It's ironic that Waco ISD is predominantly made up of Hispanic students now. I want them to know, I'll continue to be one of the many Hispanic leaders to be their voices. I want all Hispanics, African-Americans, and white students to succeed in their future endeavors. The lawsuit against the city, also along the same timeframe as the Waco ISD lawsuit, was due to Hispanic and African-American communities not having representation at the city level. I mean, there are so many things that were happening in the city. You know, I feel like right now it's happening the same way because we don't have representation in our city. So I see a lot of Latinos, 43% of Hispanics, live in this beautiful city of Waco, but we don't have any representation. And that's why me and Robert are going to continue to fight about the issues, what we stand for, and what the past stood for. So I'm going to continue doing this until the very end. Like I said, the lawsuit against the city, also along the same timeframe as the Waco ISD lawsuit, to the Hispanic and African-American communities not having representation at the city level. My father, along with Wilbur Austin and other leaders in the community, argued for more, for balance, and city council member seats. The city council seats were at-large, and there were no opportunities for the Hispanic and African-Americans could ever sit on the city council in those days in time. My father was the most vocal leader who demanded justice and equality, not only for Hispanics, but for all the people in the community. The court ruled that the city council member seats should represent and reflect the population of minorities in the city of Waco. Their large city council seat, seats were divided into smaller districts, and this is why African-Americans and Latinos can sit on the seat of the city council. I'm not done yet. Is that all? Can I continue?
Just finish your thoughts. Thank you.
I'm here to put my name in consideration because I know that, I know the community well, you know, probably better than most of you, even in your own districts. Mrs. Kelly Palmer, she won 4th district with Latino votes, you know? And I called her one day, and I made sure that I got people in that district to support her because my family lives in that district. And I know that she can work for the Latino community if you give us a chance to understand what's really happening in the community.
Thank you, Mr. Avizu, so much. Thank you both. We look forward to this process of filling the vacant council seat in District 2 and appreciate both of your concern and care for our community. And so with that, we will now recess the regular session and convene a work session with a report from the city manager.
Thanks, Mayor, and good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Want to start today's meeting off, we don't have any changes to the agenda that I'm aware of, and I wanted to start the meeting off with kind of a special recognition today. We have some representatives from Carter Blood Care here, and if you'll make your way down, and Chief, if you don't mind making your way down, would like to bring down Michael McCoy, field recruiter, Vicky Carpenter, who's the Central Texas Operations Director, and they've got an award for Chief Victorian that we're going to present to her, but first, we're going to watch a special video.
Ladies and gentlemen, now, the moment we've all been waiting for, in the 2021 Battle of the Badges Blood Drive, the winner, by unanimous decision, is Waco PD, Chief Victorian.
And we see Chief Summers here, too, for being such a great support about this great cause. I want to give a shout out to our council member, Borderoo, who is the voice of Let's Get Ready to Rumble. And what a great cause that this is. There's an incredible need here in the community. So thank you to our chiefs. And with that, Carter Blood Care, do y'all have a few words that y'all would like to share in this moment?
So I want to say, just to say what you said, there's a big need in this community, especially in the summer, and this operation here with city of Waco, the PD and the Fire Department fills that need right before Labor Day, and it's expanded over the years to include a lot of our community members and businesses in the community as well. And what were the numbers we collected this year?
We collected 400, add a G. We collected 400, 365 units and saw 448 hours.
So it was a great drive, especially coming off last year being COVID, so we really appreciate it. Thank y'all.
Thank you so much. We appreciate what y'all do in the community.
I will make a special note, and, you know, this is Chief Victorian's first year to participate in the Blood Drive. It's also the first year that I can remember that the Police Department has won this Battle of the Badges over fire and the Sheriff's Department, so kudos, Chief. Nice. Thank y'all. All right, Mayor and Council, we do have one informal report on your agenda today. It's an informal report on Highway Safety Improvement Plan Call for Projects from the Texas Department of Transportation. They sent us a recent call for projects in late September with a pretty quick due date being October 12th, so we prepared this informal report to update you on the projects we're considering applying for. Obviously, our staff maintains a focus on leveraging and accessing non-city funding for critical infrastructure improvements, and I appreciate the work of our Public Works team. Due to the abbreviated timeline I mentioned, staff will be updating the City Council early in 2022 if any of the projects are awarded by TechStop using a ratification item.
Bradley, this is Holmes here. I'll just say, good job of picking this up, September 20th, right? And we turned around the whole application process, and it wasn't just for like $50,000, this is almost $3 million grant, so kudos and thanks for getting this processed and keeping an eye out for these programs. I know we're trying to sift a lot of different federal grants right now, and for staying on top of all these, it makes a lot of difference to the taxpayers. Thanks.
Thank you. On the agenda today, we have no public hearings, so I'll move right into resolutions. We've got 32, I believe, and I'll be highlighting just three today. The first being Resolution 733, which is a contract for professional services with Fugro Roadwear for an amount not to exceed $275,000 in order to assess pavement conditions on city of Waco streets. We last assessed our roadway network in, at the end of 2015, early 2016, and really, pavement management best practices call for a reassessment every three to five years. Fugro is the vendor we used in 2015, 2016, which will allow the comparison report that we generate from them to use very light conditions and data analysis, which will really make for the best possible comparison between the 2015, 2016, and current assessment. Given how much dollars have been put into street improvements over the years, I think this is a very valid scope of work. We do anticipate that a draft report would be available the first quarter of the calendar year of 2022, which will allow us to use that data and analysis to plan our fiscal year 2023 street improvement program. Second resolution I wanted to highlight was Resolution 734, which is a contract for construction services with Knife River for a mill and overlay package. This is a total project authorization, authorization of little over $4 million and will result in more than nine and a half lane miles of mill and overlay work being completed. This is, you'll recall, we sequenced out three packages of mill and overlay work in this year's plan. This is the second of the three packages. The, I will note, the engineer's probable cost was $4.13 million, so pricing came in on this bid a little under expectations, which is appreciated. There are several streets that we intend to mill and overlay in this package, but the two primary ones are Fish Pond as well as North 36th Street, each of which currently have PCI ratings under 45. So pretty, we call them fair condition, but that's pretty low, obviously, on the scale of zero to 100. We anticipate that work to be completed in September of 2022.
I'll just echo on that one, Bradley. Yeah, the Fish Pond, which has been in a state of dire repair for a while, I didn't realize it was all the way down to 40, but yeah, that one's in District 5. And this is also, this is happening all over the city and all districts, this mill and overlay program, which is part of our Better Streets program that this council has prioritized. It's an expensive endeavor, but I think we're seeing good results. Appreciate it.
The last two resolutions I'll highlight are associated with one another. The Resolutions 735 and 736, and they're involved or associated with the city's efforts to construct a new landfill site to serve the region. These contracts are timely because on September 24th of this year, the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality, TCEQ, issued a notice of application and preliminary decision for the new landfill site. And that step means that the Executive Director of TCEQ has made a preliminary decision that the permit application by the city meets all statutory and regulatory requirements in order to open the new landfill by January 2025, which is our goal, and that coincides with the date that our existing landfill fills up. Those are important things to keep in mind. The design of the new landfill needs to begin now, even though we haven't yet been issued a final permit by the TCEQ. SCS and Walker Partners are the two contracted entities on these resolutions, and they've certainly worked on various solid waste planning and design efforts, including extensively here in Waco, and we expect their work would be completed in about 10 to 12 months. Ordinance-wise, there's six on the-
Bradley, if I may, on the resolutions, just a couple of quick other observations, good things. On number five, a Resolution 2021-713, the McClanahan County Investment Fund, I know this was in our budget, and this is just a resolution to go forward with the expense. Great program here that the business community has put together here to help small businesses, $100,000 donation, but that goes a long ways toward helping micro businesses in the city of Waco. And it's part of an overall effort that we have and we will have with the ARP funds and some of our other federal program projects of helping small businesses here in the city of Waco. The second one I wanted to point out, and I didn't, I really want to commend staff, number 10, Resolution 2021-718, where we actually had a decrease in a construction project of 216,000, saving, again, saving us 216,000 in a taxiway, an airport project that Big Creek was working on. So I just want to note, cost reduction is very important. We saved us $216,000. Anytime you can find one of those, I'm going to, I want to make sure I highlight that. So just keep, keep up the good work there.
City Manager Ford, I'd love to highlight a resolution as well, 2021-731, which allocates funds for our fire station number six, and this is the new fire station opening on 25th Street. And Chief Summers, we are excited to have you in that building and ready for all of the, all that furniture to go in. I drive by it every day, and my husband and I are looking as the teams are hard at work building that really beautiful space. And I know this was something that Mayor Meek, when he was in the seat, really fought for, so we're just excited to see this process quickly come to a close and can't wait to get those giant ceremonial scissors and cut the ribbon there in a few months.
That, we are all very excited about that. Thank you for those councilmember. All right. Ordinance-wise, we have six on the agenda today. One is a first reading, and the rest are second readings. The first reading being Ordinance 2021-695, which amends Article 6 speed regulations in Chapter 25 of Traffic and Vehicles of the Code of Ordinances, adding a section to adopt a temporary construction speed zone of 45 miles an hour on State Highway 6 frontage roads from Beverly Drive to the Robinson City limits. And if there's no further questions, that completes my report.
Thank you, Bradley. It looks like Resolutions 709, 712, and 737 have been pulled from the consent agenda. Are there any other items that council would like to remove from the consent agenda? If not, the consent agenda will include Resolution 2021-709 through 2021-740, except for 709, 2021, sorry, 709, 712, and 737. The next agenda item is work session item 2021-702 through 704. Bradley, would you please introduce the first work session?
Sure. Thanks, Mayor. We have work session 702 to start, and it's a discussion of the redistricting process. We'll invite Dr. Mike Morrison. That's the tables here, and he's serving as a consultant with us in the redistricting process. And for those that don't know, formerly served as a councilmember and mayor of the city of Waco. Mike?
Good evening or afternoon. Josh, I didn't realize you were judging the grudge match between-
Got a feature.
I don't have anything to report right now, but I'm here to discuss with you the ongoing process.
Mike, will you move the mic a little closer? I think we're having a hard time hearing you.
Once again, I've been asked to be heard as opposed to shut up. All right. Is that okay? Okay, all right. I'm, I know that we're going to have a discussion. I think it's going to be about as we proceed in the process, and so I'm here to assist in that discussion any way I can.
That's great. Jennifer, do you have any comments at this point, or do you want me to frame the discussion point, the discussion?
Sure. Mayor and Council, at your place, at the last work session, if you remember, that a decision needed to be made about whether or not y'all wanted a Citizens Advisory Committee for redistricting. And so at your place, in the next slide, Professor Morrison is prepared to talk about a timeline, should, should y'all decide to, to have a Citizens Advisory Committee, as well as a proposed charge for that committee. Those two are at your place, and, and so I think that is certainly what Professor Morrison is prepared to discuss with y'all today about that process and y'all's desire to have a citizen, redistricting advisory committee, if you do want that.
I do think that there have been councilmembers who expressed a desire for that, so why don't we look at the timeline of what it will take to do a citizen advisory committee, what we want to move forward?
The timeline that's before you, Jennifer and I have sort of looked through other commitments, and ideally, we would appoint an advisory committee and hold the initial meeting, which would be sort of a introduction, like I gave the council a couple of meetings ago, just sort of walk through the law, and at that time, share with the committee where the council is at this point on the benchmark plan, which shows what the lines adopted in 2011 look like under 2020 census, the first plan that I shared with y'all a meeting ago, and then since that time, there have been some suggestions by various councilmembers, which I have permission to share among other councilmembers, with adjustments to that plan. Now, we may or may not continue with that plan, but if we do, there have been some suggestions on how it might be improved. So we would start that with the advisory committee. They're going to, just like you, just like me, they're going to need a couple of weeks, probably, to digest that information. If we really want them to represent the, the community within which they've been appointed, they need to be people who are well-known and who are well-respected within the representative community. So that would be in each of your districts. Once they've been given the information, walked through the law, have been caught up with where the council is at this stage, then they're going to need some time to digest it, to do their job. They're going to need to have an opportunity to go out and visit within the community so that you have the benefit of their relationships in addition to your own. At that point, I think we'd come back to a second meeting and sort of collect thoughts. Where are we? Does any of this make sense? Are there things about it that don't make sense? I would be available to that advisory committee as a resource, as would city staff, but neither staff nor I would run that advisory committee. There would be a chair of that committee, and the, probably the most important task of the chair is to keep the committee functioning as a committee and not as 11 or 12 or 13 independent contractors sort of running in separate directions. A committee out of control always reminds me of this poor young man I saw in the supermarket with three kids, each on a leash, and they were all going, and I had three kids going in five different directions. And so one of the suggestions that you'll see is that, one, neither I nor city staff run that committee, but, two, related to that, and is equally important, is that communications from the committee to me or to city staff, or from me or city staff to the committee, go through the chair. If you don't funnel this through a single person, then we do run the risk of losing a lot of time and sort of chasing our tails. Citizen advisory committees, it's something that Professor Gwen and I, for 40 years, have used. I did not not recommend it, but I didn't recommend it this time simply because of the timeframe that we find ourselves in with the late census. And so that's the reason for this set of deadlines up on the board. We're going to need at least two meetings, we might need a third. That's going to be sort of up to how the advisory committee progresses. If, for example, they come back after the first meeting to the second, say, you know, this actually looks kind of good, there's something here, something there that we'd want the council to consider, we might be done. It could well be, though, that it would take a third meeting. And so what Jennifer has done is we've compared schedules, and we've put together times, which if I know soon enough, because you all are not my only client, I can, I can meet with the committee. And again, my role is not to run it, it's not to push the committee, it's to act as a resource and to take what the committee, as a whole, through the chair, asks me to take a look at, and I'll do that on behalf of the council. All these meetings will be public, there will be no executive sessions, so anybody who wants to attend is certainly welcome to attend, but it's like a council meeting, they won't be allowed to participate without the committee chair saying that that's what he or she wants. And I really think that once we get going, in probably a three or four-week period, we can bring that committee to, give it enough information and enough time to give you a meaningful report. Esmeralda checked with the county election officials at the mayor's request, and it looks like we have a good bit of time before we have to have this finished, maybe as late as February. That, I would like to have this committee work done well before Thanksgiving because you're all going to need time to consider whatever recommendations they come up with, and then we're going to need council public hearings once you have an idea of a plan. As I've mentioned before, before we go to a public hearing, members of the council need to have enough of an idea about what they might want this plan to look like for people who show up to know what they're talking about. But you can't be so far in the process that you're wedded to a proposal and where it's sort of either a fait accompli or it looks like it might be a fait accompli to the public who attend. I think we can get all of that done by early part of the first of the year, and that should give us time, maybe a month, before what Esmeralda has learned from the county election folks. Esmeralda, am I right on that?
It's in February.
Okay. So that's, that's sort of where I am, waiting for further instruction from the council.
And if I might point out, just to make the chart more clear, so you'll see in the left-hand column, proposed dates, and the right-hand column, proposed actions. And so I'll point to you, the first meeting of the Citizen Redistricting Review Committee would be the week of the 18th. Those bullets below there are when Professor Morrison is available. And so, so for instance, the week of the 18th would be, you know, in the morning of the 20th, any time on the 21st, or in the morning of the 22nd. So you can see those bullets. And so, you know, if y'all decide to have a Citizen Redistricting Review Committee, you may want to be checking to see if your, that your potential appointees- you may want to be checking to see if your potential appointees are available during those times. And so, and then, and obviously, Esmeralda, I'll be relying, Professor Morrison and the chair will be relying heavily on Esmeralda to help us with scheduling of these meetings, because it is a tight timeline, and we want to make sure we get this done as expeditiously possible, if that's what y'all want.
And I think that Jennifer has also provided you with a proposed charge. There's nothing magic about that. I had to rework it a little bit. In the past, we've had to convince clients to use these committees. Very few clients started off wanting to. And so a lot of the language that we'd used in prior charges, which you would see if you look back even at the last redistricting, were phrased a little bit differently. But the idea here is to retain some control through the chair without being controlling. And there, I think whoever is appointed as chair is sort of the key to the success of this, just like with any meeting or organization, someone who can keep the focus on the committee's task and sort of, well, just keep the focus on the task and work as a committee, as opposed to a group of individuals.
One question I have is, first of all, thank you, Professor Morrison, and thank you, Jennifer, for working on this timeline. This is helpful to us. With the, it's great to know the elections office can go as late as February, but one practical we might consider is the filing begins, and I'm guessing January, is that mid-January? Do you know, Esmeralda? So we might actually try to target towards that, like you mentioned, Professor, that beginning part of the year, so that, you know, people are filing, know what district they're filing for, where they live.
That's important. And again, when I say that, I'm really thinking about what I'm comfortable with. Ideally, if the committee is able to pursue its work under the schedule that Jennifer has come up with, and there is some consensus between what it sees and what the council sees, it'd be nice to have this done in December.
Great. Great. I think the other takeaway is that this is a fast timeline, and for me, things that are going through my mind is, as we make appointments, we'll need to make sure that we appoint members who are willing to make their schedules available for this. I think that, you know, it'll be nearly impossible to accommodate everyone, you know, if everyone has to find an opening in their schedule with all the people that we'll be appointing, it'll be nearly impossible to do it on this timeline. So it's going to need to be community members who are willing to work with their schedules to participate, I believe, so as to accommodate this greater committee. It's just a thought that I have, kind of, too, to set expectations for folks.
I've tried to arrange dates where I can be available in the morning, the afternoon, or the evening, but I simply can't do that on each of the dates.
Great. Thanks, sir.
Jennifer, under current Open Meeting Acts laws, are we able to host these meetings, both in-person and have a virtual option?
So under the current laws, we would have to have a quorum of the committee physically in the room, but less than the quorum could be virtual.
Okay. That's good to know.
And something that I wanted to mention that hasn't been asked is, you know, you might be wondering what would be the composition of the committee. Of course, that's completely at y'all's discretion, but in 2011, the composition was two members from each district, two members from the mayor, so citywide. And then the mayor appointed the chair, so for a total of 13 members.
And my thought, guys, and this is something that we just needed to discuss, for District 2, is that on this October 12 meeting that we would call to create this, when we would vote on who would be on this advisory committee, what we could do is take nominations for the District 2 seat that we can each submit, and that we would vote as a council on who would serve in that District 2 seat. Again, it's the, we don't have a playbook for this, but I think that's the best path forward in ensuring that District 2 gets good representation.
Professor Morrison, I really appreciate you presenting this timeline to us as one fifth of our current council. I think this is an incredible plan. Our council is very committed to creating meaningful opportunities for civic engagement at any opportunity possible, and so this feels like a way for us to continue to build trust and be transparent with our constituents. So I absolutely would love for us to do a citizen review committee. I think, like city attorney Richie said, the composition of each of us having two, and mayor's proposal of us collectively proposing a few folks to represent District 2, feels like a fair and equitable way to do it. I think just looking at the four of us that are currently up here, we clearly do not reflect the diversity of our city, and so I think it's really important that the five of us are really strategic in who we place as our representatives, so it does look reflective of the intersecting demographics that exist within the city of Waco.
Yeah.
Yeah, I too appreciate this timeline, Professor, that you put together along with our city attorney. I think that a citizen review committee is probably, while not necessary or required under the law, I think it's more optimal, good practices. I do appreciate everyone's sensitivity to doing this in a thorough, yet expedited way. I feel that, yet again, we are coming up on a time of the potential of four contested council races, meaning two-thirds of the council being on the ballot in May, and no one wants this to be any more chaotic than that already will be. And so I think that if we can all act as unified and as intentional about this process, hopefully we can come out with something, ideally in December, so that come January, everyone will know where they stand and what these districts will look like. So, again, thanks to all involved.
Well, let me add to that, Josh, that Jennifer did the heavy lifting on this.
Okay. Thank you.
But I hear what you're saying, Josh. I think that you do, what I hear you saying is that it's important for you that we do everything we can to have these maps set in place for the May election. And so, again, I think that this is, we're doing the right balance of working hard to elect council members for the districts which they'll be quickly representing, and at the same time, ensuring that we're working to create a transparent, community-minded process as well. And Councilmember Bearfield is not here, and I don't want to speak on her behalf, but it's, my understanding is that she has expressed interest in this as well, too. So I think this is a good path forward for us.
May I ask the council a question?
Sure.
Would the council have any objection to my meeting with individual council members and whatever individuals from their district they might want to have sit down and look at things with me? I'm perfectly willing to do it, but not unless it's okay with the council.
Could you, based on your track record and precedents, is there any risk or reward from that that we should be aware of?
Well, I mean, one, it may dilute the Citizen Advisory Committee. It may be something that's a parallel track. It's something that's been requested, and I'm happy to do that. I'm happy to, let's see how the advisory committee works in the interim. Traditionally, I've been available to any council member unless the council's instructed me otherwise, and have not objected to other individuals being a part of it. But times of the essence.
Yep.
And so I want to leave that to the council.
I'd be open to y'all's thoughts, but I get concerned with the dual tracks, but I'm open to what, what is it, everyone else? Does the mayor have opinions on that?
I think I could be open to it with a specific timeline. So perhaps if there are folks that wanted to meet with you prior to when we appoint our citizen review board, I feel more comfortable with that, as we're, you know, moving through what we, as the five of us, are proposing to offer to the commission.
And maybe a way to look at it, too, would be if, you know, if a council member, it would be with the council member, not just with members of the public, is that right?
I think it would need to be. And quite frankly, Jennifer's got most of my open times up there already. So, again, I'm willing, if it can be arranged. I raise it only because it's been raised.
And we just want a direction from the entire council, if that's something that y'all want. And it could either be before you appoint and create the committee, which is really fast, that's October 12th, or it could be before the first meeting, if y'all wanted to put a timeline on that, to first meeting of the citizen review committee. Or the whole time. I'm just offering several options.
I'm supportive of it. It might help keep things on track, is my quick observation. Just if something starts going out of, kind of, coming off the tracks, at least you have a sanity check and a quick meeting on what's happening.
I really can't predict what the--
[laughing]
And I have to say that I'm a little nervous about our timeline already.
I think, but Jim, I think for that purpose, you raise a good point. It'd be painful if we failed to engage with community members, and they show, community members we heard from the first time was at a public hearing right before the last vote-- excuse me-- when we needed to move forward to meet our timeline. So maybe there is some wisdom in having, why don't we say this for now? What does it sound like to you all to try to set, you know, coordinate with Professor Morrison, to try to make council members available prior to the October 12 meeting, should the council members and a member of their district desire to meet?
I don't have any objection to that.
Let's plan on that, then.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anything else you'd like for me?
Any other questions for Professor Morrison? Jennifer, anything that we're missing on this, from your perspective?
No, thank, no, thank. Thank you for your time. We appreciate y'all's input.
Right. All right, so council members, so we need, we will be making our appointments to this committee on October 12, 2021, and we will be posting that agenda, I believe, on October 8th. So it'll be finalized then, but we will be needing to come to the, a special meeting on October 12 to create that committee, correct?
That's right, Mayor. So we will be posting this agenda on Friday. You don't need necessarily the names for the committee by Friday, but we would appreciate if you would have the names for the committee by October 12.
Correct. That's right. Thank you so much. Appreciate it, Jennifer. All right. Thank you, council members, and it looks like Professor Morrison has scooted on, so thank you, Professor. And we'll move on to our next work session item, which is 2021-703, which is a discussion of the process of filling City Council District 2 vacancy.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council members. Let me make sure that this is on to advance the slides. See if the keyboard works. So I am Esmeralda Hudson, City Secretary for the city of Waco, and I'm presenting this afternoon on the proposed procedures to fill a vacancy of an unexpired term for a Waco City Council member. So first and foremost, basically, the Waco City Charter provides that this process is guided by Article 2, Section 4 of the Waco City Charter, and that provides that vacancies in the council or on the council shall be filled by a majority vote of the remaining members for the unexpired term or until the next city general election. City Council District 2, current term expires in 2023, so a special election will be needed to, will need to be ordered for the next succeeding general election, which is May of 2022, for the remaining year of the unexpired term. And in addition, an election will be held in May of 2023 to elect Council District 2 for a two-year term. We have utilized a process that I'm going to provide you, and most recently, in June of 2020, for District 4 position, and then in June of 2017 for District 1 position, and in June of 2016, June of 2012, and June of 2010, to fill the District 5 positions. The application timeline is pretty straightforward. The first day to file will be tomorrow, starting at 8:00 a.m. October 6th, and then the last day to file that gives a two-week timeframe is October 20th by 5:00 p.m. Interviews would be scheduled at a special council meeting on October 27th, that would begin at 1:30, and I believe we polled council members to make sure that they have availability and put them on their calendars. And then, in addition, what I've added to the timeline are the special election dates for May 7th of 2022, to fill that unexpired year, and then a regular election on May 6th of 2023. We thought it would be important to add those dates for anyone who is applying for the position, or understand that timeline continues through that regular election date. So as I mentioned previously, applicants should be aware of that timeframe, as well as knowing where to get the application. That application will be available on the city of Waco webpage beginning tomorrow, as well as in my office, which they can come by City Hall and pick one up either at the receptionist desk, or if they would like to meet with me to get over some of the qualifications, they can do that as well. They can file in the city secretary's office from Monday through Friday, from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. And I'll mention that the application will be the exact same application with minor tweaks for being a filling of vacancy as they would be filing for a place on the ballot. So it'll be all the information that's required for an elected official when you're running for a place on the ballot, but it will be used for you, as council members, to go through the interview application process. City Secretary, I will review all applications that are submitted, basically to show that they comply with the requirements as to form and content. So I'll be reviewing them timely, and that all the required information is completed and is attested to, that they have sworn to, and attested to the fact that everything on that application is true according to their sworn affidavit. Applications are immediately upon being filed in our office, public record, and are available for, through open, public information request or an open records request, depending on how you know that. We will begin to provide notice to the public about the timeline and the requirements through a press release tomorrow. We'll have it on WCTV, both on the website and their cable channel, as well as publishing a notice in the Waco Tribune-Herald. We will also provide social media targeting or paid social media, we've done this in the past, which means we will pay for social media ads to go out to as many District 2 voters as possible through the analytics and fancy technology that exists through social media. So that's been very beneficial in the past. We do have a good reach with that, and so we're going to, we'll do that again for the District 2 position. And we'll also work with the Neighborhood Engagement Office to make sure that we reach as many voters as possible. So the eligibility for office will be the exact same as if they were filing for a place on the ballot. They have to be a U.S. citizen. The city charter says that they must be 21 years of age or older. They have not been determined totally or partially mentally incapacitated without the right to vote for a final judgment of a court exercising probate jurisdiction, have not been fully convicted of a felony from which the person has not been pardoned, or other rights released for the resulting disabilities. They've had to have resided in the state of Texas for 12 months prior to being appointed, and in District 2 for six months, immediately preceding the date that they'll be appointed to be on the council. And they have to be a qualified voter of the state and of the city for 12 months prior to the appointment, and of District 2, six months prior to the appointment. And that is a charter requirement for the city of Waco. And so part of what they're attesting to is that all of this is accurate and true and correct.
Esmeralda, just on qualified voter, that does not mean registered voter. It means eligible to be a registered voter. Is that right?
Correct.
Okay.
So if the council agrees to conduct a special election, I mean, a special council meeting on October 27th-- meeting on October 27th, we would post for that with open meeting requirements, and the meeting will be open to the public, broadcast live on the cable channel and on the WCTV online. Candidates are, will have traditionally made a three to five-minute presentation, and council can ask some predetermined list of questions to each of the candidate. Each candidate will be asked the same questions, and that's predetermined by the council. I did distribute and sent by email the list of questions that were used previously. So, if there are any additions or comments or changes, then you can send those to me, and then I'll coordinate that with Mayor Meek to make sure that that is what we incorporate as we get towards those interviews. There will be a executive session provided on the agenda, which will allow the council members to go into executive session, to discuss the interviews, review the applicants, and then if the council wishes, they can come back into open session and approve a resolution to fill the vacancy if, if one is picked that evening. And then the appointed candidates, if picked on that special meeting date, would be sworn into office at the end of the November 2nd City Council meeting, which is the first meeting in November. So, I wanted to kind of go over the election calendar. Mayor Meek, you talked about the first day to file for a regular election, so it would be a good day to know what district you live in at that point, which is January 19th of 2022, and that's to file on the regular general election. But the dates that are highlighted are dates that are going to apply specifically to filling that District 2 position. So, those dates are different. We would order the special election the same day we would order a general election, and I propose that would be February 15th, if that's what council decides to do. But then, since we can't open up to file for a ballot for a special election until after it's ordered, then we would begin taking applications for a place on the ballot that next day in the morning, February 16th. Then the last day to file for a place on the general ballot, for those of you who may be on the ballot in May, would be February 18th of 2022. And then March 7th is the last day for someone who's planning to run for a special election ballot. So, yeah, it's staggered, staggered dates, and all provided by the Texas Election Code. So, March 7th would be the last day for that District 2 candidate to file to be on the place on the ballot for a special election, March 7th of 2022. So, again, what I did was highlight these dates. This presentation will also be provided on the website, along with the applications on the City of Waco election webpage, so that individuals can review the dates, understanding that these highlighted asterisk dates are what would apply to someone running for that District 2 vacancy position. And that's the process in a nutshell. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those, or if you have any recommendations.
Thank you, Esmeralda, so much. And I should have said this too. I know Esmeralda is working with Jennifer on the Citizen Advisory Committee, kind of some, some of the conversations going forward. So, thank you for that work too. And so, just to clarify, so, Mayor, District 3 and District 1 filing period will be January 19th through February 18th, and District 2 will be February 16th through March 7th, correct?
Correct. Days to file.
Awesome. Great. Thank you for your work on this.
Sure.
Any other questions? Any questions or comments for Esmeralda?
I have a couple, Esmeralda. I'm wondering if in our notice to the public, we can consider sending this out to the Leadership Plenary and Leadership Waco facilitators?
That's great.
And in terms of the questions that we provided, I'm wondering if maybe we should consider merging the last two questions of, if you have questions about the position or the council, and adding a question about diversity, equity, and inclusion. I looked up some DEI questions, and this was one from Northern Illinois University, and it says, "What does it mean for you to have a commitment to diversity, equity, inclusion? How have you demonstrated it previously? And how would you see yourself demonstrating it here?" And I'd love an addition of that, since we've identified that this is one of our core leading values and strategic goals.
Sounds good.
It looks like there's a consensus to add that and make those changes, so I can do that easily.
Mayor, I had a question. Are we going to try to do this one in person? I think the last couple we had, are we going to try to write here? Trying to remember the last couple methods we've had?
Yes. With the changes in the Governor lifting the suspended rules for open meetings Act, we would go forward as though it's an Open Meetings Act quorum of the council would have to be present, and the public is being asked to attend in person. So, that's our plan unless there get different direction to do those interviews. So, that would be scheduled for this same theater.
Sounds good.
Other questions or comments? Thanks, Esmeralda. This is great work. Appreciate you. And next, we have discussion on our existing TIF increment finance zone districts and potential creation of a new TIF district. And Mr. Andrew Ford, if you'd introduce the next speaker for that. Just kidding. Bradley Ford's going to be making this presentation himself.
That was a joke.
Introduce yourself.
Well, thanks for, thanks for allowing me to speak on this. I'm excited to be in front of the council on such a, you know, an important topic, frankly. Good afternoon, Mayor. I want to accomplish, and council members, want to accomplish a couple of things with today's presentation. First, want to update on the usage of tax increment financing here in Waco, TIF by extension, as well as work to kind of lay a groundwork to the viewing public what TIF is. And lastly, talk specifically about the creation of TIF number four within the core of Waco. TIF number four was recently the subject of an informal report to the City Council, and staff's been working on the creation of it for the last couple of months at your direction. So, obviously, the, the public in this council certainly have all seen the headlines about our regional economic success over the last 24 months. It's been a, a great 24 months in that regard. And I can assure you that that kind of success doesn't happen overnight, and it doesn't happen by accident. It happens due to alignment and alignment of organizations, alignment of tools, and alignment of resources and resources. And the usage of TIF has been a big part of that success, TIF being the primary tool we use for geographically focused economic development. TIF number one specifically, that I'll talk about in a few minutes, has really been instrumental in recruiting more than $180 million of capital investment into the core of Waco in just the last couple of years. And the ongoing riverfront development, the new Marriott AC Full Service Hotel, which broke down last week, Magnolia's corporate headquarters coming downtown are all examples of the usage of TIF to bring new jobs and new investment into the core. I want to spend a couple of minutes explaining tax increment financing so the audience has a, a clear picture of what TIF is. Obviously, a, an economic development tool, as I've mentioned, and it's permissible under Chapter 311 of the Texas Tax Code. So, if you want to read all the particulars, go to, just Google, Chapter 311 of the Texas Tax Code. And it's essentially a tool that allows for local governments, local taxing entities to draw private investment into an area. To create a TIF, an entity typically starts by determining a predefined geographic area within the city and designating it as a tax increment financing district. And at the time of that creation, as this chart will kind of, I'll be, I'll explain through it, at the time of the creation, a baseline property value is identified, and the tax revenues occurring at the time of the creation continue to flow to each taxing entity over time during the TIF district. So, essentially, you kind of freeze the level of revenue over time. And as, as new investments, new projects occur within the zone, and new revenues come into the zone, those get diverted into, into the new tax increment fund. That's what's shown in the yellow or orange color on the screen. The, the fund and the dollars in the orange then are used to strategically invest in public infrastructure that allow us to stimulate additional private investment, create new small businesses, encourage development of properties, and essentially grow the economy, with the concept being, at the end of the life of the TIF district, each taxing entity will see far greater tax revenues than had it not participated in the TIF. So, let's talk for a moment about TIFs in Waco. We certainly were an early adopter of tax increment financing here. In fact, we have three TIFs that are approaching 40 years old at this point, which is, is getting up there in TIF age. TIF 1 is, as I mentioned earlier, the one you primarily hear about in Waco, because it covers downtown and east Waco, where we've seen significant investments over the years. TIF 1 is the one shown in yellow on the map on the bottom left-hand screen, and it runs from the Brazos River near La Salle with a sliver reaching all the way down to Lake Shore Drive. TIF 1 is the largest. TIF in Waco, considering its acreage, as well as deal flow and investment, as you're seeing in the chart there. In 2021, in fact, the annual increment that flowed into the TIF fund was $12.3 million. That's deferred revenue from Waco ISD, the City of Waco, McLennan County, and McLennan Community College that deferred out into the TIF fund, and then was subsequently invested into, into projects. As a, kind of a note here, you'll note that all three TIFs in Waco currently show contribution rates at 100%, meaning all of the increment value for each of those entities gets diverted into the TIF fund. That is, that's a product of when these were created. In the, in the 80s, that's, you did see that happening a lot, where entities chose to divert all of the growth in increment to the TIF fund. I would say more recently, though, you see entities allocating only a portion. And that's a reality that, that each entity, ours included as a city, certainly have restricted revenue growth from a property tax standpoint as a result of legislative actions. And so, what the staff is proposing for TIF number four is likely going to be a lesser contribution rate, so that each entity that participates is not giving up all of the increment value for 20, 30 years. TIF 2 and 3 that are shown on the map, TIF 3 in blue and TIF 2 in green are lesser known. In fact, many in Waco probably don't know that they even exist, because they haven't had a deal flow. You don't read about them in the Waco Trip. And as a result, you won't be surprised, staff is looking at terminating TIF number 2 in the coming months. It's the one in green along the Brazos River. It, it has not been used in a number of years, and it's currently has a, a fund balance of $2.8 million in the TIF fund. And so, what will happen there is we will, as we terminate TIF number 2, there'll be a one-time distribution of that fund balance to each taxing entity in accordance with how the dollars came in from each entity. So, as an example, McLennan County will receive $520,000. MCC will receive $130,000. Waco ISD by far will be the most, at $1.6 million, and then $630,000 approximately will be returned to the City of Waco. Again, those will be paid out based on the tax rates and contribution rates that each entity had into the fund. So, let's talk for a minute about TIF number four and our efforts there. An observer of this presentation might wonder, given all the success we've had in downtown and in our industrial areas, and in economic development in general, why we would be wanting to create a new district. Ultimately, the move towards a new TIF is rooted in the fact that Waco has several long underutilized and blighted commercial corridors just outside of downtown. These corridors haven't made significant progress, even as much as, as when Waco has experienced an economic boom. You would think that those changes would have occurred, but they frankly just haven't. In fact, I'd encourage you either to hop in the car and drive around several that we'll highlight here in a moment of these commercial corridors, or get on Google Street View and, and look at their timeline tool. You can pick a building out on that tool, maybe on 25th or 26th or Franklin or East Waco Drive, and look at what the street view image looked like in 2005, 2007, 2012, and now 2021. And you, I don't think the council will be surprised, perhaps the public will. There's deteriorating vacant structures each time Google has drawn, driven by with their spy truck. My point being, these corridors aren't going to fix themselves, and the city team, council certainly feels like intervention is necessary. Another reason that I feel like we need to, to move forward on TIF 4, obviously, is that traditional investment and capital tends to go where they deem it safe to make investments. Not safe from a public safety standpoint, but safe from a easy flow of capital standpoint. And more and more over the last couple of decades, safe areas have been seen as those on the edge of cities, in the suburbs, and away from the core of the city. And, and we know we need a strong central city. We need to have every tool in place that we can to bring a portion of that investment into the core of, of Waco, and the TIF can certainly be a, a big part of that. So, have listed several areas potentially to be served by TIF 4 on this slide. The staff's been working over the last couple of months to create this list, as well as a, an online interactive map of the draft TIF 4. And you'll see there's kind of three categories. There's the blighted commercial areas like La Salle, 25th, 26th, Call Court Avenue, Franklin Avenue Corridor, East Waco Drive, Dallas Street. Those are kind of fit that, that blighted or underdeveloped commercial corridor portion of the conversation. There's also large greenfield development locations that lack infrastructure. And as I open up the map here in a moment and show you, you'll see those along State Highway 6 and Loop 340, as well as off Lake Shore Drive. And then there's major institutional sites in the community that are included in the TIF, including MCC's campus, the former Floyd Casey Stadium site, which is a key redevelopment site, as well as the Doris Miller Veterans Hospital, and the former Hillcrest Hospital site in Dean Highlands neighborhood. So, here's the, here's the map that, TIF 4 is everything shown in red at this point, the draft map, TIF 4. This will be available by the end of the week for the public to view online on the city's website. So, you'll be able to zoom in and out and see how these lines fit together and, and exactly where the TIF boundary goes. But you can get a sense of scale here that TIF 4 would be our largest from an acreage standpoint, our largest TIF in Waco, and certainly much larger than TIF 2 or 3, and, and even considerably larger than TIF 1. Our next steps on creating TIF 4, we have certainly, we've engaged with our other taxing entities. I had a work session last week with McLennan County College, which was productive. Also intend to get to McLennan County Commissioners Court this month. And additionally, we have a consultant onboard to help us create a revenue analysis of how much, how, how much funds will be generated into the TIF based on development patterns. And they'll also help us draft the project plan that's required by Chapter 311 of the Tax Code. It's my hope that we are coming forward with our first public hearing as early as November, and then in December documenting participation agreements with each taxing entity, and then finalizing the project plan and implementing the zone as early as 2022. With that, I'll take any questions that you might have for me.
Questions or comments for Bradley?
Thanks, Bradley, for the presentation. Great, great work. Following up on the last informal report we had. A firm believer in, in, in setting this up. I mean, if you look at the success of, of TIF 1, although I look at it now, started in 1982, I think really it was a gradual, it wasn't like a, like a, this kind of deal. It was more like a very flat for a while, and then the last maybe eight, 10 years, we've gotten the, maybe if even that. We've seen the benefits of that increment increasing to reinvest into that, into that zone. So, yeah, I think it makes sense to target, particularly, I like the, the way we're being very thoughtful about blighted commercial corridors, La Salle, 25th, 26th Franklin, you have the list there. Greenfield development locations lacking infrastructure, again, that, that makes sense to me. And then the major community partners, you have three categories that, that seem to be thoughtful. It seems like a big map when I first look at it. So, as we go through this process, as, as we refine it, maybe add... So as we go through this process, as we refine it, maybe add, subtract parts of it. And we talked before also about getting a trailing, a trailing, to me, a litmus test would be, are the trailing five years, are we not seeing value increases in these neighborhoods, in these target neighborhoods? And if that's static value or very little increase, I think it helps, it bolsters our, you know, our decision, yeah, we need to focus on this neighborhood. Are there termination provisions on, I'm trying to remember, you may have covered it, and I didn't take a note on it, but is, are they for 10 years, 20 years, 30 years? And if they're not working, or for whatever reason, are they terminated, can they be terminated?
So our participation agreement and project plan will document each taxing entity's time of being involved in the district. You know, I intend to request 30 years on this TIF Number 4, but I would imagine each taxing entity might have a different opinion on how long they'd like to stay in the zone, and that'd be documented in their participation agreement with us. But it's entirely flexible in terms of, they may say they want to be in for 10 years, or 20 years, or I've seen the example where an entity would say, "I only want to contribute a maximum amount of this many dollars into the TIF fund, and I'll leave after I've contributed that amount of increment." So there's flexibility that can be worked into the participation agreements.
I like also, just one last comment, I like the 70/30 kind of a, where if we do see like, you know, ridiculously, or, you know, a very advantageous jump in values and jump in the increment fund, that part of that is coming back to general fund, or where those, that property tax value would normally end up. And then just being mindful of that increment, ultimately, coming out of the general fund, we talked about this the other day, actually kind of rotates back in, because those general fund dollars probably would be used for this TIF fund area anyway. So I just got to work my mind through that whole process, but good work, and I like the process that we're running here.
City Manager Ford, thanks for presenting this. The more that I see this, the more I fully comprehend all of the complexities of TIF. One of the things that we, as a council, really appreciated that you and your staff did when we were looking at the annual budget, was seeing how each of the moves that we wanted to make next year were in alignment with our strategic goals. And this plan makes me really excited, because it hits our top 1 and 2 priorities, which are increasing equity along intersectional lines in our community, and having really comprehensive, multifaceted economic development. And this marries and merges these in really exciting ways. I love seeing how this will bolster, a lot of these are historic communities of color throughout the core of the city, and I love that this work is a very strategic place for the city to operate in. I think we need our faith communities and our nonprofits and our startup Wacos to all be a part of redeveloping Waco and really bolstering the core of the city. But this is a unique tool that us as big institutions can leverage on behalf of this redevelopment, so this feels like an exciting role for us to play. And just excited to partner with the organizers and the entrepreneurs and the artists that have long been investing in places like the 25th and 26th Street Corridor, or 17th and 18th, and for us to come alongside them with some infrastructure and some funds that can magnify the work that they wouldn't have been able to do otherwise. So thanks for your work on this, and excited to see our institutional partners come to the table.
City Manager Ford, I'd like to echo my fellow council member comments, to the extent that Baylor will not have any property in the TIF 4. If so, I have no comment on this matter, but, as a full-time Baylor employee, but I will say that, in general, the large principals that are animating this conversation, that hopefully will not intrude on any conflict of interest in the future. Core development, good. These specific areas, great. I appreciate the thoughtfulness. I appreciate the long-term strategy, and also your work with these other taxing entities. Obviously, you're skilled in this way, and I think that you're doing a great job of bringing everybody onboard, so thank you for your good work on this.
I'm so excited for this. This is a long time coming. We've worked on this and talked about this for a long time, Bradley and your team. Thank you for the hard work that has gone into getting us to this moment. I think it's a monumental step to strategically and proactively utilize tools available to us to ensure that we experience smart, healthy, good growth. And, you know, one way to look at this is to remember, this protects our tax base. Incentives like these, in these highlighted corridors, without incentives like these, these highlighted corridors are not going to see the investment needed to preserve our tax base. I think you brought up a good point, Jim, when you said, you know, what's the value increase? But I think as the demand in Texas has risen and values across the state have risen, we've seen, while we've seen some increase in value, I think that we haven't seen necessary development, given the condition of many of our corridors and our commercial corridors. And I think you take a great point, so I'm not taking issue with it, I'm just saying, I think, you know, other things, and I'm not asking for city management to go look at this at all, but I mean, I would suspect that the number of permits pulled, the number of code violations issued, and just, you know, the eye driving down these corridors would recognize that but for something, some market intervention, the structural integrity of many of the buildings along these commercial corridors will continue to dilapidate into a place of complete disrepair that will give us, get us in bad shape. And the good news is, I think there's a lot of excitement right now. I think that there is a lot of excitement in investment in the core of the City of Waco. So for me, it's kind of a, for such a time as this moment, for us to jump in and utilize this tool in our toolkit. I think about, as Councilmember Palmer mentioned, back when I specifically represented District 4 and got to know some of the merchants on that 25th Street Corridor who have beautiful businesses and are ready to invest, but just need a little kickstart, and I think this is going to do that. And there's a return on investment to the taxpayer at the end of the day, and I think we can be cognizant of when we exit this TIF, or when we wind down this TIF, and then we get that return on the investment, and these invested funds flow into our general tax, our general fund that wouldn't have otherwise. So I also think this is a way to support small business and neighborhoods in a way that aligns with strategic goals. We've talked about Upjohn Report and others over the years, and the neighborhoods around downtown are critical, and the commercial corridors that track those neighborhoods are imperative for the success of downtown, and I think that this accomplishes that goal. Something to keep in mind is that TIF is not a new tax. I always think anytime people hear about TIF, they're like, wait, is that an extra tax? And it's not. So Bradley, you did a very good job explaining that, I just am reiterating that to drive that point home. This is not a new tax. This is a portion of the fund that we would otherwise collect, going to investment in this specific geographic area. I look forward to, Councilmember Palmer mentioned, you know, these, many of these neighborhoods being traditionally communities of color, and I look forward to community conversations of ensuring that this tool is implemented to benefit all members of neighborhoods, our small business community, and new and traditional real estate investors, and others who are looking to access this tool. I know that we'll implement strategy around that. I don't know if this is the time to bring it up. I think one, as we look at the numbers, Bradley, one area that I don't see in there that I'm going to throw out there, and I would like to see the impact to the financials, is between Franklin and Waco Drive, between, or just the TIF 1 cuts off on, I believe, 11th Street, and maybe even to 17th Street, and if not, all the way to 25th Street. That, between Waco Drive and Franklin is a commercial corridor that I also think needs strategic investment. So I know that you've run some numbers and kind of fiddled with it already, to see, you know, if that is a, as our financial advisors are looking at the impact of implementing this to the general fund, if you feel confident that this is, that would be a good investment, I think it's worth looking at, just because that is a commercial corridor that I think meets that criteria of needing incentive offerings, and would be worth looking at. But certainly know that there's a variety of factors that staff is balancing, and we'll trust your judgment on it.
Okay. Well, thank you for all the feedback. I'll evaluate that area as well.
Cool.
Thanks, council.
Thank you, guys. Any other questions? Great. All right, well, with that, we will move to the next item, which is, are there any future agenda items? Hearing none, we will now recess the work session, reconvene regular session for executive session, as read to the, as read into the record by the city secretary at 4:20 PM.
Notice is hereby given, the city council will go into executive session in accordance with the following provisions. One, attorney briefing, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.071, Brent McCain versus Officer Fabian Klucka III, Clause Number 621-CBE-00442, pending in the U.S. District Court for the Western District of Texas, Waco Division. Two, real property, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.072. Three, economic development, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.087. And four, personnel, Texas Open Meetings Act, Section 551.074, nomination and appointment of individuals from McLennan County Appraisal District Board of Directors. We are now in executive session at 4:21 PM.